It's Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Actually, 6:02. We are meeting in the lower theater. There is a connection for Zoom for all those who want to attend by Zoom. We have a liquor commission agenda first to head off with. So I will call the meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th, which is in your packet.
They're moved.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? I have one. I noticed that my questioning of the funds on the fire thing committee coming out of the development fund, that's not noted in the minutes, something, it's not in this backbreaker, but just thought I'd bring it up. Okay, motion from both of you, moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? We do have one that was left off. We're going to put them on item number four. Kathy Erfer from the River Conservancy wishes to address the board. It has to do with the FERC relicensing.
Peter, can we also address one thing for BIFTA?
Yeah, BIFTA did not get on this agenda, unfortunately. And they did send a summary of all their activities, so I assume everybody must have got that. I think it was sent out.
Yep.
And I think if we need to have them come in, we can take and ask them if anybody has any questions, or perhaps we can address them to you.
Can you do them in public comments if she wants? I think Betsy's on.
Yeah.
She wanted to raise some stuff in public comment.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes a person. Board or the board?
Didn't Betsy want to talk?
Anybody in TV land out there? Seeing none?
Well, Betsy wants, she's raising her hand, but she's unmuted.
Go ahead, ma'am. Do you have a comment?
Hi there. I'm sorry that I wasn't on the agenda.
That's okay, we've got you on there.
Okay, so I could just...
We put you on number four. We just went, well, we just approved, put you on as item number four.
Oh, well, I'm Betsy Thurston with BIFTA. So I was left off the agenda, I guess.
Right.
But I could be added as well?
We hadn't put you on, we hadn't had you, only because we had your summary sheet there that you sent out.
Okay.
So if the board has any questions, if they had a chance to read that, now's the time, I guess, we could address it.
I watched it. It's the same summary you gave to the trustees, I assume. Yeah, I watched all of that. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Doing a nice job, though.
I've read the thing. It's interesting that the things that you've accomplished over the winter months, so kudos to you for that. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I wanted to add, we have a little project to do some painting touch-ups in the downtown, and we just want to make sure that's okay with everybody. We're looking at May 2nd. We want to just touch up the paint at the bases of the lampposts where they've started to peel. So we just want to paint probably the bottom of a couple of feet of the posts.
Scott, do you see any issue with that?
No, we can work. But that's on a Sunday? I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking Saturday, you're talking Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we can get people on both days.
Yeah, it's just, that's fine. I'll work with, we'll work with you on getting materials and supplies together and coordinating.
There are you. Mike, okay. I just ran into your mask. Okay. Next is the manager's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, did you need to...
I don't know, Mike has. I don't know.
Are you here for a mic?
On the solar, okay. Got it. I'll go ahead. I know we've got a couple of things that are waiting, Peter, so I'll wait until we get into the leases, since we have people waiting, and then we can follow up.
All right. Okay, now we're going to the meeting of the Board of Liquor Commissioners. We only have one. Wunderbar has withdrawn their outside consumption permit, so I'll entertain a motion for Wellfleet, if someone would make that motion. Move or approve the license?
I move to approve Wellfleet, Inc., DBA, Saxon River Market, for a second-class license.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Wellfleet, Inc., Saxon River River Markets and Class License. Any further discussion? Hearing done? All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we'll go to the regular, Scott, do you have the original for that?
I do. I just gave it to Roger.
Okay, we're going on to the regular agenda, and the first item is discussion of lease for solar projects. There are two locations.
Right, so, just as a little background, right, the board has previously approved, just to give you some context, you have a land lease right now with a farmer who does just some, it's a $300 land lease that they do. Some plantings, I think, did hay on this location. So that's in the general vicinity of where we're talking about with one of these leases. So, over time, I know the board has had discussions with different providers. We currently have two locations that we have a project on, and now there's been two specific proposals. I believe that, is it Mike or, do you want to speak on yours specifically, or?
I'm not going to.
You're just, okay. So again, I haven't done anything in relationship to vet these folks further. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, get a sense of how much you want us to invest in these two locations. One of them is fairly close to the meeting house, one of them is in the rear of our current gravel pit, and I know that that site has been discussed in previous meetings. And the most recent time, I think it was in 2018, the board decided at that time that they were not interested. So, before we get down the road, I just want to get your sense of how would you like us to approach this? Is this something you're interested in pursuing? Is it something that, again, you're not, you're not interested as we go forward? There is some payments involved. Obviously, it has aesthetic issues, and there is some environmental benefit to some of these as well. But both of these companies have been very interested in pursuing, and I just wanted, before we engage them, just wanted to check with you guys to see where you were with either, neither, or one or the other, so.
Okay, is anyone on the board beside myself have any comments?
I do, but I'll wait till you go ahead. I'm sure I'm feeling that we're the same.
Well, I know Green Lantern's been here at least three times that I can recall, and it seems like every time we have a change of administration, they show up. And it's in the section of the pit on 103 that the town has. They're currently not using it, but I think that's the only source for gravel we have currently. And in the past, I know the history's been that we've always told Mr. Mima that we were going to try and reserve that land for expansion, if we could do it for business, or that gravel pit area. I know that doesn't go up into that area where he's looking at to put those things. The second one, I know the picture from MHG was pretty dark, so I have another one here that I pass around, and that one is in the historic district for Town of Rockingham. It's just off to the side, the north of the meeting house currently, in the cemetery. So if someone wants, they can, I'll pass this around. The other one was really dark on MHG, so the white area is what they want to do, and meeting houses are shown there. So, Sue, do you have any comments? I know you were on the board when we talked about...
Yeah, well, I mean, honestly, you know, on a personal level, for those of us who live in Bartonsville, we would love to see the pit turned into a solar panel field, because there would be no lights that would interrupt our homes. But I think it's something that we need to have at a board level, is a discussion of what we want to happen with that site. Do we want to develop it into a place for a company to build? I mean, there's no sewer, there's no water, so there's a lot of, a lot of issues with that site for development, for business purposes. I think it would be perfect for some type of solar, solar array, or something that would be very low impact on light environment, noise environment, and traffic, because that 103 is very difficult to get out onto many times with all of the traffic going to Ludlow. So, but I think we haven't had that discussion, that Act 250 permit is up, I believe?
Yes.
If it's not up, it will be up?
I think we're in the final stages of it, soon.
Yeah, and I think we need to have a discussion about that whole section of what we're going to do. Do we need to retain some of it for storage for the town highway department? And if so, what, and what we can under the Act 250 permit? And I think it needs to be a larger discussion. I'm not opposed to solar panels going in there. I just don't think we're at that point where we've had a real discussion about what to do with that property, because it's, it's a valuable piece of property.
I agree with you 100%, Sue. And these issues are, they're challenging. The state has a target of so much in renewables in just a couple of years, and we're a long way from it. This is something that comes up at the, at the regional all the time. And I, you know, I think we have to really, you know, it's nice to say, well, we want to keep that land, we might do something there. I think it's time to talk about what we would do there, what's feasible, and so forth, and how that compares to having a solar array there. I don't think we're ready to really test fail on that tonight at all.
I mean, it's a, in a lot of ways, it's a perfect site, because you would not see it from the road going by, you wouldn't see it down in Bartonsville looking up. I mean, it's a good hidden away, and it's on a formal gravel pit, which is what the state...
It's exactly what they call a preferred site.
Right.
Yeah.
But in the bigger question for the benefit of the town, I, we haven't had that discussion.
No, I think, you know, one of the issues that I think we have to talk about, and Sue touched on it, is we do have some obligations under Act 250 for restoration. And again, before we get into any conversation about other uses, if we were to go and pursue some relationship with a vendor, that would be, I think, one of the things that we want to put on the table, obviously, is the town would not, they would have to take on some of that obligation as well. The larger discussion about the entire redevelopment of the parcel, I think, is probably a longer conversation and maybe more, in more depth. This is really just a question of how, how do we want to address this? And maybe we just tell the applicant, we're not ready now, and we'll let you know in six months, after we've had a chance to, you know, have these more in-depth reviews and get back, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely need that discussion. I think we also have to have a bigger discussion of what is available in the townwide, in the Town of Rockingham, to cite some things like this. And really, there isn't a lot for solar. It's basically that pit.
Anyone else on the board? Mike, you have any comments you'd like to throw in?
Yeah, sure. So, Mike...
Get a microphone.
Here you are. I'm the chancellor.
There's another one over there, too. We don't care where you go, somebody.
This is all, we pick up your voice, that's all, yeah.
All right, just turn it on there.
So, I'm Mike Yan, I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission, which, for the Town of Rockingham, which also is the home to the Energy Committee for the Town of Rockingham. And I felt like this was an opportunity, when I learned about these proposals to come here, particularly with the new board and the new manager, to just remind, well, one thing, to remind the board that we're out here. Part of the reason that we were established was to look at proposals like this, and so, putting aside the larger question on the gravel pit for a moment, we would just hope that we would be included in the vetting process for any of these proposals going forward. We've been looking at these proposals that have come into the gravel pit and elsewhere over the years, so it's, these aren't new to us. We know a lot of the issues that have to be addressed in these, some of the public, public policies and state law issues. So we feel like we're, we're here as a resource to help the select board in making these decisions. So, you know, even beyond these, we just hope that you would think of us and come forward with, with these proposals for vetting. I do want to let everybody know, if they don't know, that we, that the town energy use is already, we are already off-takers from two projects. So our energy for these lights right here, this microphone, is coming, being paid for through solar, the two projects. And this was something that Peter Bergstrom, who's the chair of our Energy Committee, really spearheaded a few years ago and helped make it happen. One of the projects is down in Guilford, but the other is here, here in town, I believe. That was also another, we're involved with that, right?
Yeah.
Oh, Novus, right.
It's also in Bartonsville.
But, yeah, it's another old gravel pit, right? Yeah, so it's a preferred site here in town, so ideal in that, in that way. We have, I was saying last night at our Conservation Commission, I think we have looked at all these proposals Peter mentioned have come through for several years, at least, probably at least three town managers, several cycles of the select board. In general, we support having solar developed in that, in that gravel pit. As already been said, it is an ideal site, is a preferred site, which is a legal term under the state, solar siting. It is one of the least visible places, most people don't even know there's a gravel pit there. We have been frankly frustrated that every time this comes up, the same discussion keeps saying, well, we have to wait, you know, till we figure out what we're going to do with the land. I don't know how many years back this goes now, but I hope that this finally, maybe there will be that discussion. The last time we did hear, well, we have to wait on the Act 250 permit, and then also we're waiting to see what happens with the old state police barracks, which adjoins that property and would give it road frontage. I don't know actually what's happened with that.
It's been sold to the Tractor College School.
Okay, so, you know, we, you know, we question, we've questioned as the commission about whether other development would be appropriate out there in general, because there is no water, there is no sewer. We know that the island needs to be redeveloped here, there's space in the industrial park along Route 5 for other kind of commercial development, there's places that need to be redeveloped in Saxon River. So, you know, we keep wondering, who would even want to be out there with no water, no sewer, maybe no road frontage? So I, I understand you guys need to go through a process here to figure out what to do with that land, but, you know, when the commission, as far as the Conservation Commission's concerned, when you come around to that, hopefully you'll come to the conclusion that solar can be at least a part of that, and that it is one of the most ideal sites. I'd like to see the whole thing actually developed into solar. And I do want to just know, on the other site, while we didn't take a vote on it last night, because we didn't have the actual, we just learned about the proposal last night, but the one by the meeting house, we would generally frown upon. That land is Agawam Fine Sandy Loom, which is USDA prime agricultural soils, is some of the best agricultural soils in the, in the town. It's probably not being used to its highest and best use as agricultural land. Right now, it's in hay. It could grow, it would be as productive as the land that Harlow's grows vegetables on. It's that caliber of soil. The Allens farmed Agawam, Sandy Loom, and Westminster. I have long thought that it would be, you know, a parcel that could be put to higher agricultural use there. The history of it is, is that it was a part of the DeVall farm. Nate, Nate DeVall, back in about 1970, gave it to the town for the expansion of the cemetery with the provisions that DeValls would be able to farm it until the town needed a cemetery, and that they would have to start filling it from the Route 103 side back, so they could continue to use it until they needed it. You know, cemeteries are a dying business here in Vermont and New England. We have the highest cremation rate in the, in the country, and so the fill rate of the cemetery out there is very slow, which is why 50 years later, it's, we're not anywhere near needing to use that for the cemetery. So I for one, and I think the commission as a whole, if we brought it to the vote, would say, we'd support continuing to keep it in agricultural production, especially with that high-quality soils, rather than solar. We have this other very good site, we probably have a few other sites like that in town. I don't think it's really the only one, you know, that we, the gravel pit that is, as a preferred site. I don't think we need to be looking to this meeting house site. And also, I did go up there today. If you were walking in the cemetery there without the leaves on the trees, you will see the solar panels down there. If you are driving north on 103, you will get a glimpse of the back of them. I think the way this community feels about the meeting house and that historic nature, I think it would be another negative for why that site should be not considered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was great, thanks.
Sounds, sounds like we're headed for a meeting somewhere down the road here, in a couple, three months, I guess. I'd say probably somewhere around September, maybe we have the schedule list, maybe before then, when the Act 2, we figure out what we're doing with Act 250.
Yep.
So why don't we think about that, and if I can get that back. Scott, I'll give you these pictures, because the ones on the meeting house, unless we decide not to do anything with that one, they're not very clear, but this one here is a lot clearer, so if you want to save that for a discussion later, we can...
Yeah, I would say having it sooner rather than later, because we have been pushing this off, pushing this off, pushing this off.
Yeah, I think it's just as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And just going to do some soil work before we do the closure, so.
Yeah, but I mean, at least we know it's going to be closed, and, so, the gravel has been extracted at this point. So it's just, I think the discussion of what future of that lot should be. I mean, I know at one point, the railroad was interested in it, because they could put a spur up there, and that would really not make people in Bartonsville happy, because we know they're going to park fuel tanks there, and we do not want a lot of propane tanks stored there. We would rather have a solar thing there. And the other thing is, would this have to obviously go out to a bigger bid process? If we do determine that, that is what we would want, what, what's the process for turning over the land, whether it's sold or leased?
I think the board would have, I mean, in any of our land use decisions, we were looking the other day at some property in and around the cemetery, there's always that discussion, you know, how would you like to approach any land disposition? So, in this case, it probably would need some sort of public process, that I would assume that we would be looking at substantially more money. I mean, I think this lease is only $10,000 a year, and something more substantial on that property is going to be significant other than that, so it would require, I would think, a more robust public process.
All right, we'll, we'll set it up for meeting, discussion for a future meeting here.
Before we close the topic, I think we had one...
Month and two. Ralph, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wondered if I could be recognized for a second.
Sure.
Thanks. I just wanted to...
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity just to speak for a moment, just to add a few different considerations to the mix. The quick background is that we responded, our firm being Green Lantern, we responded to an RFP in 2013, so that's when the process started. And actually, I was cleaning out my office the other day and found a graphic I put together in 2016 about the location. So, a couple of things. One is that we do consider it to be a very, you know, high-potential solar site for all the reasons that you discussed. My understanding is that the north end of the gravel pit, which is where we sketched out a possible array, actually is reclaimed, at least that section is, I think they call it Phase 1 of Act 250 there, is actually reclaimed, which makes it even more readily available as a preferred site. The second thing is that we would be interested in buying it, you know, I think that would be our preference to actually subdivide, you know, pay the subdivision legal fees, and then buy that junk from the town. So that should be considered as, as one alternative to pursue, that we would prefer. If you decided that you did not want to sell it, but that you'd consider leasing it, then we would be interested in leasing it as a single upfront, one-time prepayment lease for a 25- or 30-year period. And then if, if you preferred to have regular annual income, we could discuss that alternative. So I'm putting those three different financial scenarios out there as, as, you know, within scope of what we would be interested in pursuing. The last thing I just want to mention, too, is that, and this is, this is just a, something to think about. This kind of project would fall under the state's net metering program. That's, that's what we would be considering it for. There are other programs, but for that size, 500-kilowatt array and so forth, net metering would be most appropriate. What's happened with net metering in the recent, in recent years is that every couple of years, the, the net metering credit value drops, and it keeps going down and keeps going down, and it makes it harder and harder to make projects viable. And from just before the, the beginning of this year, through to September 1st, the value of a net metering credit for a 500-kilowatt project on a preferred site is dropping from 15, roughly 15 and a half cents per kilowatt hour, down to 12 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And we have, as a firm, realized that that's a big drop, and it's going to make a lot of projects that we've been able to do up until now no longer feasible, just from a financing standpoint. And this, this may be one of those kinds of projects. I don't know for sure. It may be that a short access road, very easy access to three-phase power, the fact that it's already reclaimed, may still make it possible for us with our business model to develop, you know, going into September. But if there was any way the board could make a decision about, you know, what to do with these different proposals, you know, within, say, the next month or two, we would be able to get it, get an application in under the deadline and be able to ensure that it got slightly better rates than it will, will get after September 1st. That's our concern, but, but it could make a difference in our ability to, to develop the project, you know, depending on the timing of your decision. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, or, you know, go back to anything I said if you'd like to take the opportunity now.
I, I just have a question that I'd like you to clarify. Did you say that you would only use the reclaimed portion? Is that what you're interested in? Only the reclaimed portion that's already been reclaimed?
Yes, and it would probably even be a little bit smaller than the sketch that's been circulated, because...
Not, not the whole piece?
No, not at all, no.
So if that's already been reclaimed, what are we waiting for?
Well, it's because we've never had this discussion about what's going to be at that site, and whether we, if we split it up, does that make the other part less valuable? Because if somebody's looking for, I mean, I don't think, I think you're right, I don't think anyone's going to want to go in there and put water in the sewer, they have to have a very low, it's right on the river, too. But we just haven't had the discussion. It just keeps pushing off, pushing off, pushing off, and pushing off. I mean, I think we just need to sit and have a discussion, we just need to settle it and decide.
Well, can we discuss right now?
But we don't have all the information, really.
Because we need to know what, what we've got to accomplish with that rest of 250 and if it will match in, so I think we can schedule that, you know, May, you know, something like that, and we've got two meetings coming up in May, so we can...
How would that work with your timeline?
Oh, I mean, if you were able to make a decision... Oh, I mean, if, if you were able to make a decision about what to do in May, that would be fantastic. Just one other thing to note, too. There have been a few other cases where we have leased land from towns or arrays. I mean, for example, on the landfill in New Fane, there's a 150-kilowatt project that we did there. And the way that New Fane handled it, which is one of the options within statute, was we negotiated a lease with them, and then they put it out for a 60-day public review. Nobody had any objections, and then the lease was, I guess, executed or whatever. So, I know that that's one way of doing this, but, but if you were able to make a decision about the, you know, your decision on the future of that part of the pit within the next month to six weeks, that would be fantastic.
Why don't we set that as a goal?
We can set it. We'll, we'll have to see what, you know, what our agendas are looking like. If we got a chance to stick it in there, we'll, we'll go for it.
And, 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 you know, gather, if somebody's going to gather all this information that we need, or Mike or...
Oh, yeah. Scott, Scott probably got their stuff in, so we can, well, we set the agenda anyway.
I mean, I've, I've been watching these select board meetings for 11 years, and I've seen this come up again and again and again. And every time, I'm like, why, why won't they even consider it? I, I don't get it, you know?
Because there's been opposition to tying something up for 30 years when maybe somebody wants that whole parcel. And we haven't ever had anyone just decide, okay, who would want it? Is there even a market for that? We just haven't even gone to any of those discussions.
And then the other thing that entered into it, we were trying to get the state police property.
Yeah.
Right.
And then the price cut to be ridiculous, and so I think they, we just kind of sat on it, gave them an offer, and they didn't accept it and sold it to the trailer company, back to trailer school. Yeah, right.
Is the gravel exhausted entirely at that pit? So, we...
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, basically, I think right now, they're just storing material that's sitting up there. They do the crushing and some crushing that's done up there. I don't, I don't know.
And then there's two sections. There's the old pit where we're storing everything, and then the, the section you're talking about is the newer part that we took the gravel out and we reclaimed it. And I think it's two separate Act Two Fifty permits.
There will be.
Yes.
Right. One is the, right, the old area needs restoration, and then we'll have to do restoration in the middle as well.
One other, sorry, one other point. The, I'm respectful of all the work the Green Lanterns has put into this, but is there any requirement that we put this project out for bid in terms of the, the land, or should, or can we make the decision to choose one vendor?
Does it, i- i- is that, if we're looking at a sale compared to looking at a lease, does that make a difference in terms of, of needing a bidding, bidding process?
Well, I mean, boards make decisions all the time about sale of land. Sometimes you'll, you'll sell to neighbors if you're looking to dispose of a prop, you know, a piece of property that's a paper street or something that's no longer as municipal purpose. I think the issue is, again, I think in this instance where there might be multiple parties interested, it probably makes more sense for us to do a more public process at that point. You know, when the butters are involved and the board wants to satisfy a problem, in many cases, you'll, you'll do an appraisal, you'll have a price, and everybody agrees, and that's, you know, a contract for sale. You guys approve and away you go. This is a little more complicated than those types of transactions, so it would make more sense.
Another thing, if we were just looking at, you know, a big picture of evaluating sites that were, had potential for solar development within the town, Cavendish did a, a very successful town-owned solar development, which actually saved the town, continued to save the town a lot of money. So, if we're talking about solar, it might just be something, you know, which we'll look at.
Peter, Mike wants to talk.
So, I think, I mean, that brings up the point again that this is where the Energy Committee, the Conservation Commission would be useful, because we have had those, we've had those discussions. Cavendish certainly came up, and I, you know, I understand Ralph's timetable here and such, but once the town was on board with allowing the consideration of solar here, we really wanted to look at all the options, including whether it's a town-owned site, particularly now with a bunch of federal infrastructure money coming in, potentially with money for renewables. You know, I, it's such an unknown right now whether or not there'd be any opportunity there. It's hard to say. Plus, you know, there's changes in Congress now to, or it's, you know, what, what's available in terms of tax credits and some of what, what will happen with renewables in the next couple of years. It's, it's hard to say. I know right now, there's one statute, state statute that's changing that's maybe making it unfavorable, but there might be other things on the other side that could be making projects more favorable. And I think that's the kind of discussion that we would want to have in depth at the Energy Committee level and bring back something we could select for.
Well, are you, are you, I'm, I'm trying to understand what Elijah said and what you said. Are you talking about the town itself building its own array that it would own and operate?
That's, that's what Cavendish did.
Uh-huh.
And there's obviously, things have changed since that project went in and made out the peaceful. There have been a few other towns. Most of the projects have gone with, most projects have gone with a, a project like what Ralph would offer, or Green Lantern would offer, because of certain, you know, economic management issues and so forth. Well, because it is something that has maintenance, right?
Off the top of my head, I think we got enough to worry about. I don't know.
And we wouldn't benefit from the power because we're already in this agreement with Novus for our, our product.
We have two, so...
Yeah.
We'd be selling it.
But I think the, the maintenance, it's the same thing when we talked about buying the power down. I mean, you're, you're bringing a lot off to the town.
It's a little bit less competitive.
Yeah, which is, but still, it's...
Well, can, can your committee kind of give us, in our, in our next meeting packet, a summary of your findings and, and recommendations? Is that something that, that we can do, Peter? In two weeks?
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm sure if we, the information, things have changed, so I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the committee, you know...
I'm not sure what the committee's availability to do it in two weeks would be.
Or, or then four weeks?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll bring it to the committee and see what we can do. I...
I, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that way, the more information you got to make a decision, the easier that decision gets to the committee.
And, and that's, that's their thing, you know?
Yeah. I think Peter Bergstrom was to say something.
Oh, good. Peter's out. I didn't realize. Peter made it here. Oh, and Guy Payne, who is also on the Energy Committee, is now on as well.
Peter, are you, are you prepared to speak here?
Sure. I mean, I just got on. I spent a half an hour trying to get on, so that's extremely frustrating. I don't know what finally worked, but, uh, are you talking about specific sites or just solar arrays in general?
Uh, we're just basically the, the one at the gravel pit. We're, we're considering. Mike's been top, filling us on, on your discussions a little bit here, so...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know if it was mentioned that even though the town and the village are already signed up with solar net metering agreements, the schools are not, to my knowledge. So, it certainly seems like the schools would be an excellent off-taker. Has that been discussed?
Oh, yeah.
No, but it's been mentioned, I think Ralph's proposal, the Green Lantern's mentioned something about the high school being an off-taker.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm available in two weeks. I'd, I'd be happy to come back, but, um...
Yeah, we were, we're, Bonnie was interested in signing, get some sort of a summary from you people to, for us to, to put in a packet for a future meeting, and...
Sure.
That we can, it's something that you people have discussed, and then we could all get together and, and, and discuss it.
In two weeks?
Well, in, in two weeks, four weeks. You know, we've got two meetings in May. I think one of the two would be, depending on what else we have on the agenda that's pressing, they could work it in.
Yeah, no, I'm available on, on May 4th if you want to do it in two weeks.
It would be the 5th. We meet on the Wednesday now.
Right.
Yeah, we meet the first Wednesday, and...
Oh, oh, okay. That, well, that's fine.
All right. Well, why don't you get in touch with Scott, our manager here, and forward the information to him to get it in the packet, and we'll get together and set up a, a time and an agenda for a meeting.
Does that mean you're not talking about the specific proposals tonight?
No, the, the one at the Meeting House seems to be, the board seems to be leaning towards not accepting that one because it's in Historic District, and what Mike's told us your conversations have been, appears that looks like the way we're probably heading is, is to not do that one, and turn our attention, you know, turn our attention more towards the gravel pit area.
Okay. Yeah, we're certainly not in favor of one on agricultural soils. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, we look forward to that from you, and, and we'll schedule a meeting, and you'll have the agenda, and so you'll know when you're up.
Great. Thanks. And thanks for, thanks for being there, Mike, when technology failed.
Yeah, it's always nice to be in person.
At least you know you'll be heard.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I guess we're, we're accomplished with that one. Let's move on to the agenda to the paving, chip seal bid. Actually, we have the appointments. There's an advisory council to senior solutions in your packet. There's a letter from Nancy McCullough pretty much explaining that she'd been on that committee for a year and a half and thought she was appointed and evidently hadn't been. So, I would entertain a motion to appoint her as a representative for senior solutions advisory council.
I so move.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed would say nay? Motion carries. Now we can get to the paving bids. And that is in your packet, and Scott's had the lead on this one.
All right. And I've got a, a copy of the memo if somebody doesn't have it with them.
It wasn't in my packet, so...
Yeah, I've got it.
Very good. So, we advertised for bids, came back with three at the time of the bid opening. Pretty large, as you can see, large spread between, which is not unusual, depending upon how much work some of these contractors have. Sometimes influences their pricing, sharpening their pencils. But as you remember from our budget discussions, we had talked about a $450,000 budget for paving for this year. Based on the bids that we received, Springfield Paving had the best price for the basic paving portion of the contract, which also has an offset. So, we'll be billing $21,875 for manhole adjustments and other manhole cover adjustments. That'll, that'll be reimbursed for, for this contract price. So, the total is $312,897, but we'll actually receive $21,000 from Saxon's River for that portion of the work. As well as then, on the chip seal, we only had the one bidder, and again, within budget based upon the reimbursement. So, if the board is so moved, the, the paving price that we received from Springfield was $72 a ton, which was consistent with last year's. The others were substantially more than that per ton, which is why you'll see the higher prices. We were happy with that number. We weren't sure that we were going to see those numbers this year, given some of the recent price movement in petroleum costs, and the fact that we weren't sure just how competitive the contracts were going to be. So, with that in mind, we recommend that we award the paving contract in the amount of $312,897 to Springfield Paving, and the chip seal contract in the amount of $159,79125 to All States Construction.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve awarding the bid to Springfield Paving.
I move that we award the bid to Springfield Paving.
I'll second that motion.
Any motions been made and seconded? Any further discussion? Questions?
Just to get me up to speed here, which areas are we going to be repaving this year? We had a list that we had circulated prior to the board that listed, the vast majorities were out near Saxon's River. So, we're following sort of a five-year paving plan. So, I think we're in year three of the five years, I think.
Yeah.
Sounds right?
Yeah.
We're finishing up. We still have some paving from last year that we're still finishing up, but this one is more, most heavily concentrated in that area this year. I can give you, I didn't bring a copy of that with me, but I can send that to you, Elijah, separately. There was, I think, roughly 28 locations on that list.
Yeah, something, something to that effect, yes.
Yeah, and if you haven't got the plan, you should get a copy of that, too.
Yeah, I don't have it.
There was also a five-year plan that went and looked at pavement management conditions and what we needed to do to improve our overall pavement quality. And, you know, to the board's credit, they, they made a decision to increase their support. And, you know, this is, like I said, the third year of that five-year window. So, I'll make sure I'll circulate that to the board as well.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Approve the, the paving bid for, to Springfield Paving for $312,897 with $21,875 to be reimbursed from Saxon River Village for manhole adjustments. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now, I'll take a motion for the chip seal.
I'll move that we accept the bid from All States Construction, Inc. for chip sealing.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving, accepting the build for All States Construction for Chip Seal in the amount of $159,79125 would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, next one is item four, which would be the River Conservancy. Kathy, I hope you're still with us. Yep, there she is.
She just turned her microphone on. There she goes.
In, in regard to the first relicensing, it was requested to be put on the agenda. So, Kathy, I'll let you take the lead on that one and have at it.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks so much for giving me a little bit of time here to talk about the relicensing. I have been talking to a lot of the, the towns just to update them on where we're at with the relicensing and some of the decisions that the company has made. I normally do a quick PowerPoint, but I think, given the circumstances, it, it'd be a little complicated to do that, so I'll try to just explain where we're at, and then I can follow up with an email to the chair with some links to additional information for folks to kind of, you know, be able to have time to, to look into it. Essentially, the, the Wilder Bellows Falls in Vernon Dam started their relicensing process in 2012, and it, we're, we're not quite done yet. So, pretty involved process. The license will be a 30-to-50-year license once it's issued. And so, the decisions that are made right now is really kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a consideration of what might go in this coming license, what might be put into it. And as an example, the fish ladder that's in place in Bellows Falls right now was a result of the last relicensing in 1979. So, that was required in that relicensing. So, there may be a great deal of infrastructure and, you know, capital investments in the coming years as a result of this license. Over the course of the past year, some of the stakeholders who were involved in some of the aquatic species discussions had a negotiation with Great River Hydro to come to an agreement about the, an operational change for the facilities. And so, in December, Great River Hydro submitted a final amended license application with this operational change put forward as their preferred alternative. And the operational change, I'll try to explain it, you know, quickly, is that, you know, for the past 40 years under this previous license, these have been peaking facilities, meaning that they hold the water back until electricity prices go up, and then they start to generate and move water through the turbines when the prices are high. And so, what that means is that the impoundment would go up and down a couple of feet generally, you know, once, at least once a day, sometimes twice a day. Under this new operating scenario, they're actually going to be closer to run of river, meaning that... Under this new operating scenario, they're actually going to be uh, closer to run of river, meaning that, you know, as the water is coming down through the river, they will be passing it through the turbines and they will be generating uh, 24 hours a day. And then in the agreement, we also came up with the ability for them to have additional flexibility and this allows them to maintain uh, access to the capacity market in um, having some period of time in each month when they can peak. But it's a, it will be a lesser peak than what they're doing now. And there will be, there are constraints on up ramping. So like how quickly they go from 800 CFS to 10,000 CFS. And constraints also on down ramping. So how quickly they move down again. So the whole way that the river is gonna run will be different under this new license, assuming that FERC approves this alternative operating scenario. Which is great for the river from an aquatic uh, resources perspective. It will function much more like the way a naturally flowing river does, which is going to be more protective of a lot of, of a lot of our species. So we're actually really excited about the conversations we had with Great River Hydro and feel like we came to a, a good win-win on that piece of it. And uh, in addition, the company will have to provide what are called protection mitigation and enhancement measures. So those generally, uh, you know, like in the case of 15 Mile Falls in the previous relicensing of those facilities that are much further upriver, that resulted in a mitigation fund of about $15 million that currently is administered by the New Hampshire Charitable uh, Foundation for Restoration Work north of White River. So that's an example of something that might be the result of uh, you know, protection mitigation and enhancement measures under this license. They, Great River Hydro recently released, um, there was some, there, you know, at this point where they submitted their final license and FERC will have to deem the license complete. Um, and we anticipate that will occur later this summer. Once FERC deems the license complete, there's the opportunity for public comment. And in the meantime, FERC goes back and forth and uh, requests additional information. So in response to one of those requests for additional information, uh, just uh, you know, a couple of weeks ago at the end of March, uh, Great River Hydro sent a letter that included three Excel spreadsheets that have a lot of detail for some of the mitigation and enhancement they're planning to do. And I will send this uh, to you so you can look at it, but it does have enhancements for recreational facilities at Herx Cove. Um, a plan for possibly having a company help portage people around the Bellows Falls portage. Additional enhancements for the Pine Street Boat Launch and things like that. So um, we want to make sure that these uh, these details end up in the license because that is really the main way that Great River Hydro will commit to doing this. And we, uh, it also included a certain amount of funding for, you know, what seems like ongoing maintenance and um, support of off-site mitigation in the project area, which is essentially, you know, from the Mass border all the way up to like Piermont, um, New Hampshire. And so uh, you know, I'm, we'll be trying to examine whether the amount that they put forward is, you know, appropriate for a 40-year license. But um, so there's some, you know, changes coming and an opportunity for the town to engage in this process and comment on the relicensing. And that's really why I've been reaching out to the towns just to try to make sure that the select boards are aware of what's going on and uh, you know, understand that there will be a, a time coming up, we believe in late summer, for folks to be able to comment and put forward essentially their requests and concerns um, about this relicensing. And I'm, I wanted to try to be as brief as possible. And again, I'll follow up with more information, but I'm also glad to answer questions that folks may have.
Hey, Rick? Thank you, Kathy, for that wonderful summary. Do, will the amount of electricity produced by the dam be reduced, increased, or stay the same as a result of the run of the river approach?
It's basically, uh, it's basically going to be the same. They had to do um, a, a financial analysis for one year. And so in terms of the revenue, they indicated a 1% uh, reduction in possible revenue using that one year. And again, it's a one-year example. It also happened to be the, the year that was, um, had the lowest electricity prices. So, um, but our understanding is that the electricity will be, the electricity generated will be basically the same overall, but it'll be generated differently. So you know, you may have heard about the power purchase agreement that they just entered into with Green Mountain Power. You know, this, right now, all of their facilities are peaking facilities. And so this operational change will allow them essentially to switch Wilder Bellows Falls and Vernon more to like a base load facilities. And so to a certain extent, they're kind of, uh, they're able to diversify their assets that way. And so they would continue to have peaking facilities up at 15 Mile Falls. And then these would be generating electricity, you know, 24/7, in addition to being able to respond to higher price points and, and uh, emergencies or when the, when they are called on for the grid.
Thank you. So I understand that the um, the appraisal of the dam has to, one of the factors is the revenue that's produced by the electricity. You know, town of Rockingham uh, really depends on the tax revenue from the dam and the, the generating facility. And there have been uh, negotiations over the years about actually how much the facility is worth and therefore how much tax will be paid. So you don't think this will affect then the, I mean, it's probably hard for you to project, but we should probably think about how this might affect the, the assessed value of the facility.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, I, I guess given the fact that this is a major relicensing, um, and I don't know that much about tax law or the, the previous interactions, but my guess is that the company would probably appeal their taxes because it's an opportune moment to do that. Or perhaps they could, you know, feel that they could make a justification. So I would expect that frankly, because if I own the company, I think that would be a wise decision. So you might anticipate that whether um, you know, Rockingham and Bellows Falls are kind of in a particular uh, position uh, in relation to the facilities because of um, the amenities that are located on site. And so um, I would say, you know, this is in terms of the town commenting, you know, it would probably be useful for the town to comment regardless, you know.
Amenities such as the fish ladder or Herx Cove or what?
The fish ladder, Herx Cove, yeah. I mean, they're, from our perspective, you know, when you think about the recreation economy of the Connecticut River Valley, they're like every, every opportunity where there's a boat launch or where people can be, you know, coming into or out of the river or the fish ladders, you know, those are great, great possibilities for, you know, tourism, having people come into town and stay, you know, start a paddle below Bellows Falls or now that that portage maybe will be enhanced, uh, you know, bring more, more people through town if they're paddling the river.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Just Kathy, real quick, I, I, I've been doing some baseline research. I know that Hydro Quebec has been looking at these off-site storage facilities that might help when they have large demand periods because now with flow of the river, they're missing out maybe on some of those peak pricing points. And I know they have a couple that are open operational, but they have not discussed in any of the FERC information that I've seen about the Connecticut River. Have you seen anything in any of their literature that talks about these types of facilities? Or if they're in their capital plan somewhere that we just haven't seen yet?
We uh, CRC actually uh, contracted with Synops Energy Economics because we, before we came to this agreement, we were, we were going to suggest that installing some battery storage might be a way to allow the company to move to run of river, um, because that is, you know, a better ecological choice. And so we uh, we presented that to Great River Hydro, I guess, last year or the year before as a possible, you know, alternative to help them maintain access to the capacity market while making some changes in terms of how they operated. And they ended up going this route to go to run of river anyway. So um, even without that battery consideration, it's hard to anticipate how the market will go over the coming years. Uh, so they, they still could do that. To, from my understanding right now in terms of what's being put forward in this license, there is no discussion of battery storage or nothing like that included. That's always their prerogative. And, you know, I think it's probably, probably would be a smart thing to do to continue to diversify their assets and try to add that as um, a way to to capture the capacity market once, you know, once that's fully embraced by the New England ISO. So.
It just, it seems to make a lot of sense for us from the standpoint of we have lots of available industrial land, fairly close to their facility. It seems like a business to me that would, would be, you know, something that where they could make money. It's not like we're asking them to provide this for some, you know, charitable or governmental purpose. It's a money-making operation. And um, just, it just, it's interesting that they haven't really pursued that more. And again, it impacts our concerns about the assessed value of our facility. So anything like that would enhance the value and certainly is something that we'd be interested in as well. So.
One last question? Um, I happen to volunteer at the fish ladder for the um, nature museum. And I have a question. We never see any fish, almost, almost never have. And I've been there for days and days and little kids come through and stare through the window and so on.
Yeah.
So will the run of the river give the, is it the ale wives that, that, uh, are they the ones that, that uh, used to come up?
Yeah, a couple of things. So I, I actually um, monitored the fish ladder. Oh gosh, when I, when I first, in like 2004, the summer of 2004, and I was lucky enough to be there collecting the videotape when um, an Atlantic, a tagged Atlantic salmon came through. So I saw it live go through the fish ladder. But again, that was, that was a long time ago. Um, yeah, very lucky. Um, the, the main problem with the fish migration is further down river. And, and so this relicensing encompasses Wilder, Bellows Falls, Vernon, and then also two facilities in Massachusetts, the Northfield Mountain Pump Station and the Turner's Falls Dam. And the Turner's Falls Dam area is the, is the bottleneck right now. Um, the passage there is uh, abysmal. And so the fish that are making it to Holyoke, which is further downstream, Holyoke was relicensed, I want to say 10 or 14 years ago maybe, um, and they installed a fish elevator or fish lift, which is much more efficient way of passing fish. So quite a few get past Holyoke. When they get to Turner's Falls, they get stuck. The few that can get past Turner's Falls, uh, the Vernon Ladder is a pretty efficient ladder, although in this relicensing there are going to be tweaks to that ladder to make it even better. And so you should see, hopefully, uh, as a result of this relicensing, better migratory fish passage. The species of concern are um, American shad, which, you know, yes, that, that may be the one you're thinking of, right? So the traditional shad runs would have been millions, excuse me, in millions of fish. We saw 304, about 348,000 pass through Holyoke last year and 3,000 pass through Vernon. So they're working on restoring that fishery. And then the other two fish of concern are the um, sea lamprey, which when they come up the Connecticut River are actually going blind and dying as they're finding places to build nests and reproduce. And then also American eel, who really are resident species who live in the river. And then those guys, when they become adults, actually migrate out to the ocean to spawn. And then the young find their ways um, through epic journey back up into the rivers. So you know, each of those fishes can be a little finicky about how they like to move through the water column, like American eel prefer to slither on their bellies. So tweaking the fish ladders to, to um, make them most effective to try to pass all of them is uh, you know, some of the things that the fisheries biologists are working on. But yeah, restoring uh, the shad run would be um, you know, change the face of the river if that's possible. And there's a lot of fisheries biologists out there working on that.
And Turner, but Turner's Falls, is there any plan to eliminate the bottleneck at Turner's Falls?
Yeah, so like the, these facilities, that is going through relicensing right now. And my counterpart in uh, Massachusetts, Andrea, who's our river steward in Massachusetts, she's actively involved in that relicensing and commenting on that. So we should see improvements one way or another.
Thank you.
If you have anything to do with it.
Hey, anyone else have any questions or, that's very informative. I, I learned a little bit of stuff tonight. So I'm glad we did work you into our agenda and uh, able to get some information. Uh, one question I had was, it was, are there discussions on infrastructure in, in regards to the, the Bellows Falls Dam only because of the, we, we were in the midst of a bridge uh, and rehab or something there. And they claiming the walls of the canal are, are, are degrading. I, I didn't know if that's, that's something they're aware of. I assume they are, but.
Yeah, I am not. I had a quick conversation with Gary about that. And I am curious about that whole process and I don't know enough about it. You know, my um, my understanding was that they were not willing to drain the canal for the footings for the bridge. I don't know if there's other engineering issues there. If they were, you know, because the canal is the main source of money, if they have to drain it, that's a huge amount of money that they wouldn't be able to make while, while it's empty. But, but I would imagine as part of their dam safety process that they would need to have, you know, they would need to inspect that. And I would think if uh, you know, there could possibly some point at which, you know, maybe maintenance would need to be done on the canal walls. But it's really, uh, I, it hasn't come up in the relicensing and I haven't heard any other details about it. And I would say there's a, you know, there's a dam safety question there. But I don't know too much about it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else has anything, Mike? No? Okay, I guess we're all set. Kathy, appreciate your taking the time to attend our meeting and, and fill us in on some information.
Yeah, thank you so much. And as I said, I'll follow up with probably more information than you want. And I am also uh, here to, you know, come back maybe later in the summer or something, answer more questions or to uh, help, you know, if you want to submit comments and, and uh, anything you might need.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, review agenda items for our next meeting, which is May 5th, a Wednesday, just to remind the public.
I have a appointment for Rockingham Conservation Commission.
Right.
Which we had discussed earlier. We'll do the update. I'll work with Peter on the Energy Committee. The conversation we started this evening. And we should have financials at that meeting as well.
Peter, Scott asked me to give a, a really quick update on uh, where things stand with uh, the violas and um, Congress and so forth.
Okay.
So um, uh, Gary and I met with the Wampole Select Board a couple of weeks ago. That went very well. And um, they agreed that they would contact their congressional representative, Annie Custer. And I haven't gotten an update from them. Uh, meanwhile, and you gotta forgive me, I have uh, vision problems. The Vermont House of Representatives has passed a resolution that was brought forward by um, Leslie Goldman and uh,
Carolyn.
Carolyn Partridge, Carolyn Partridge, yeah. And uh, it was resolved. And it was resolved by the House of Representatives that the General Assembly urges U.S. Representative Peter Walsh to propose the Vileus Bridge as one of his congressional community project requests, and that Congress appropriate funds for this request, and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to the New Hampshire and Vermont congressional delegations. So we're getting some good support on that.
Thank you.
Okay, review of the agenda items for our joint board meeting. That's two, three months away, so we've got some time to think on that one. If anybody has anything, just give Scott a buzz and we'll, we'll work it in. We don't have any orders and bills and warrants, I don't see. Well, you do have some, okay? We, has everybody had a chance to look at the agendas that were, the warrants that were sent?
Warrants, yeah.
Through email?
Yep.
Okay. They will be coming around while we discuss other business.
We have a vote to approve.
Want to start with other business? Do you have any?
Yeah, just, just, just brief, that we wanted to start doing the spring cleanup with DIFTA, and pretty modest plans. We just want to touch up the base of the lamp posts as needed, and general cleaning up of the, of the village, and we would like to paint the kiosk in front of the town hall. So if there are any volunteers who want to help out on any of those things, just get in contact with us, either myself or Betsy Thurston at DIFTA. Probably looking at May 2nd, Sunday, or if people also want to work on Saturday as well.
Sue?
Yeah, just what's happening with Greenup Day? That's May 1st. Do we have bags like normal, and what's happening with that this year?
I'll have to, I'll follow up with Andy.
I know Guy Payne's on it. I can't think of who else. There's someone else, there are two people that were assigned to that. I can't remember who the second one was. But I know Willie Corbett has been patrolling 121 on a steady basis, and there's bags and stuff that he, I think some that he had from last year are piled discreetly along the road for pickup, so.
And I think there are bags at the Saxons River Market and other places.
There's some?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually you can get them up the town clerk. I don't know whether they have them there. And sometimes they've had a dumpster at the 103 garage, and I don't know what the plan is for that.
Okay, well, at this point, we hadn't talked about it in any great detail, but we could certainly do those things, just see what's just pointed out.
Some other reason, Amy Howlett's the other person, I think, is on there with Guy Payne, are the, are the chairs of that committee, so.
I'll follow up with them as well.
And so if they can post on the website what the procedure will be?
Yep.
Rick, you have anything?
Nothing.
Bonnie? Couple of things. I heard at the Great Vine, there was a meeting on One Center Street that was taking place on Monday. We don't need to get into it, but if anyone attended that meeting.
Yeah, I was there.
You probably will have to recuse from a hearing if we have one, because you now have expiry communication, whatever transpired there.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just one thing you want to be aware of, so. We don't need to go into it, because we should be in an executive session if there's anything going on with that thing.
Nothing new at this point. At some point, we'll be back with a follow-up action. Have not been in touch with the owners, so we need to set a date, and we'll meet as a board of abatement at that point, but nothing, or Board of Health rather, but nothing right now, Peter.
Are we planning to, I thought Andy had mentioned that we were going to pave Pine Street after they got done with the work up there?
There was some paving that has to be finished up from last year, which was Springfield was working on, some of it this week. I don't know how much they actually got done.
Is, are they paving this from curb to curb, or are they just doing the trench paving?
My understanding is they're just doing the, they're not doing curb to curb. They're just re.
Okay, I thought Andy mentioned something about they were going to repave that, but maybe he was thinking down the line. The only reason I'm asking is because as you get to the top of the hill, there's this rock wall on the right-hand side. I was going to email Andy. There's a pretty good-sized pothole right there that you gotta try and avoid.
Okay.
So you might want to throw something in there.
Yep.
Anyone else? Nobody else in radio land? We don't have a need for an executive session, so I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor would say aye.
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 We're out.